Hello and welcome to our Germantownship Board of Trustees meeting. This is a new thing for us to do it both virtually and in person, so hopefully this all works out okay. If you could please go, I like to call the meeting order, it is 7:01. If you could please see and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right, would you take the role, please?
I apologize.
No problem, it was a struggle for me. I do appreciate all of you coming in, we have several people online too, so that's nice. Yeah, I don't see him.
So, Mr. Heston.
Here.
Here. We have a call, and this is a special meeting, a health purpose, to discuss the vacant trustee position as a result of the resignation of trustee Matthew Burns effective May 31st, 2020. That is the only order of business for tonight.
Yes, so as Mr. Heston stated, that is what we hear about, is that Mr. Burns resigned effective, I guess it'd be last night, as of midnight, I'm assuming. And so we need to begin the process of appointing someone, oh, I'm so sorry, I'm not on you, didn't listen, thank you, of appointing someone or filling that position. And so there were some steps outlined in the ORC for doing that, or by the code. The first step is, we have 30 days to fill that position. If Mr. Subbs and I cannot come to an agreement to fill that position, it would then go to a committee of five people, that Mr. Burns put on his, I don't want to say his ballot, petition, thank you for the Board of Elections. And then they have, I believe it is 10 days to decide on who, those who they would like to appoint to the position. If they can decide, so if Mr. Subbs and I cannot decide, they cannot decide, then it goes to the probate judge to decide and to choose someone. So there is a process to do this, it doesn't happen very often, but I'm happy at least that there is a process and some outline of how we go out, filling this vacancy. At this time before we discuss any further visitor comments on there, in case there's anyone that has questions or anything that we can answer, or a statement of some fashion. I just want to say real quick that it does have to pertain to things directly for this meeting, I didn't put this in here, but it has to do, has to have to do something with a special meeting about the appointment.
Do you want me to turn the video on for?
Mark Cross, 7444 South Stivers Road, Germantown. I'd like to thank the trustees for allowing me to speak to the board this evening. I'm here to inform you of my interest in filling the open trustee position, and if so appointed, I will plan on running for the position in the general election for the remainder of Mr. Burns' unexpired. For this position include, I served as Germantownship trustee for four years from January 2016 to December 2019.
Sorry, I have my microphone, but not my speaker.
I served as a member of the Germantownship Board of Zoning Appeals for about 18 years prior to that. I am currently serving as an alternate member of the Germantownship Zoning Commission. In addition to serving in these positions, my commitment to the job of Germantownship trustee, before deciding to run for township trustee in 2015, I attended multiple trustee meetings to get a feel for what the job responsibilities were. After leaving office, I have continued to attend all meetings to keep myself informed. I attended the Ohio Trustee Association Annual Session all four years of my tenure. At the As a trustee, I worked on various projects to cater our citizens. These projects include about the use of Narcan by our police department, and conveyed that information to the board. For no cost to the township. Researching to the board and public information concerning Ohio industry. Sending to the board and the zoning commission information concerning industrial size solar farms in Ohio. In what I think is my most in the children of Valley View School District, I researched the William Faust Memorial Fund to allow the board to once again allocate money from this fund to help a local organization, Sunshine in a Bag, distribute. During my 10 years trustee, I felt that I had a good working relationship with our official officer and our employees. I made regular visits to Mrs. Warback and Chief Anzek in their respective offices. I also visited road supervisor Jeremy Holt in his office in the service court, to not only see how the township business is going, but also just to talk about how their lives were going. My schedule I was, and will be available if something needs and was and will be available to attend meetings during the day, and was and will attend meetings during the day, these may not be available. During my tenure as a trustee, these included meetings concerning police and health insurance benefits, and interviews for potential police officers. I believe I also had a good rapport with the members of the Fire EMS Committee upon which I served. To try to increase communication with the city of Germantown, I began to attend Germantown Council meetings, and made reports of those meetings to our trustees. In conclusion, I feel I would be the best candidate to fill the open trustee position. As a former trustee, I can move immediately into the position and be productive, no unproductive warning period necessary. Also, I was the only person besides former trustee Burns, to make the effort to file for election, obtain the 2019 general election. By my previous actions as a township trustee, I have proven my dedication to the residents of Germantownship, and will continue to fulfill the obligations as a Germantownship trustee. Any questions?
Thank you.
I muted also.
Do you guys have the sound to your computers turned off?
My speaker's turned off, and my microphone is turned.
Your microphone is on, actually.
It is on?
Yep, there, now it's off.
Is there any other visitor comments, questions, concerns? Yes, sir.
I'm gonna take mine off as well. Mark Keener, 7865 Jamaica Road. I think like everybody in this room, we were surprised to find out of Mr. Burns's resignation, so kind of a shock to everybody involved. My first thought when I heard this and knew that there was going to have to be an appointment was, well, there's only one logical choice, and that's Dr. Cross. Other people, I mean, I've talked to four or five people, I'm not a native Germantownship person, so I don't know everybody in town like a lot of you do, but everybody that I've talked to over the last few days was, that was their same reaction as well, is, there's only one logical replacement, Dr. Cross. So he outlined very eloquently his accomplishments, qualifications. I'd actually forgotten about your whole thing with the Narcan, that was, that's a huge deal, and I know you spent a lot of time on that, as well as the Faust Trust. So I just would like to say that I would be in full support of seeing Dr. Cross back up there, he did a great job. I think one thing to keep in mind is that with two of you both working full-time, I know we had some issues with Matt, also working full-time and not able to necessarily get to meetings, attend to citizen phone calls, complaints, Dr. Cross has a very flexible schedule, and has the time, obviously, to dedicate to the townships. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Josh Nichols, 7672 Prep County Line Road. Apologize for being in uniform, but I'm getting ready to go to work, just want to preface that my comments are mine and not indicative of what the chain of command has to say. I just rise in support of Dr. Cross, and that support, I don't know really any of you guys, I don't really know Dr. Cross, what I do know is that he was motivated to apply for this position, he ran for this position, he held this position, and he just seems like the obvious choice, so I just wanted to voice my support for, for him as the trustee, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
David Garone, 14239 Kiefer Road. You can add me to the list, the doc is dedicated, and I've never seen anybody put the kind of energy into the job as he has. And I've been watching the trustees for a while now, every week, and he did it. So I appreciate that from him, and I encourage you to get him back in there, thank you.
I'm not gonna be up here for a second, I think you've got a golden opportunity here to pick the low-hanging fruit. You've got an experienced, knowledgeable, well-liked, detail-oriented candidate sitting over there, and I don't see any need to stretch this out into some long process because no one else was, wanted to even have the job, except Matt, you've got a guy over there that has done it, he wants it, he was good at it, and everybody in township likes him. Big plus, thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Kurt Jacoby, 12955 Harris Road. Been on the zoning commission for about 10 years, and have been pleased that Mark's been joining us here for the last half year, he stepped in after his defeat at the polls, indicative of his commitment to this community, without losing stride, he jumped right in to help where he could. He's committed, well-liked throughout the community, analytical, hard-working, experienced, and ready to assume the role as trustee on day one. He has the unanimous support of the zoning board, I've talked to all of the members, including the president Paul Dolez, who said absolutely, without a doubt. He's also come to every meeting this year, I understand, to help with support as he could, in, as part of the visitors, so, okay, so, that's all I had to offer, but he has my strong support.
Anybody else? All right, I think I've unmuted, do I need to turn my volume up as well, or no?
No, just unmute.
Okay, I did that. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you guys not able to hear me, I apologize, I don't want to yell on the computer and be too loud. The appointment of trustee, I guess I'll go over my beliefs, and then I will also give Mr. Subbs a chance to go over his, as you can see, when I outlined in the agenda, some points about hosting the position. I guess it is my belief in that the citizens of the township have the right to, the opportunity to apply to be a trustee if they would like to be. There's no length of time set up by the Board of Elections or the ORC, as far as how long that length of time has to be, but I know in this very short period of time, I have had two separate people reach out with interest in becoming a trustee, or the possibility of it, I should say. I don't, I haven't spoken to Mr. Subbs, I don't know if he's had people as well, but I just think that the citizens deserve due process, they deserve us to look through and see who else is interested in this, and there might not be any other fabulous candidates, but I just think that we deserve that, we owe that to our citizens to do that, just to give them time to apply, to throw their name in the hat for us to look at. There's really no downfall to doing that, to seeing what the citizens have to offer, what the citizens would like to do. I just feel like that's why I outlined in the agenda today, points as to where should we post this at? I know there's been openings in some other townships or some other cities, and people kind of came out of the woodwork with some great ideas, and I would hate to stop anyone from having that opportunity. That's my feeling on it, I think that there's really no rush, we have 30 days, let's work through this and see what applicants we have to, we have to work from. That's really all I have, Mr. Subbs.
Well, you're right, there is no rush, however, before us, we have an excellent choice for replacement for Mr. Burns. As everyone in here that spoke stated, Mr. Cross is an excellent member of this community, has done a fantastic job. You mentioned that people would like the opportunity to reach out and be a trustee, well, that opportunity is available next time petitions are able to be picked up at the Board of Elections. Dr. Cross was the only other person who picked up a petition, he was the only other person that got signatures, he was the only other person that ran. So I believe that, there's no reason to drag this out, there's no reason to go beyond today. So, there's no reason even to post this opening, because the interest is here, and in this room right now, if you had interested people, are they here tonight? I don't know, are they here, do people that showed interest, are they here tonight? So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2020-dash, yes?
Oh, sorry. Hello, I'm Kim Daps, I live off of Germantown, Middletown Road, and I have nothing against Mr. Cross whatsoever. However, I agree with Abra, that there's a process to everything, and you have to give everybody an opportunity. Just because it's the way it's been in the past, doesn't necessarily mean that's the way we need to go in the future. We've had issues, I'm not blaming Mr. Cross, but we need change. And I just want to encourage you to think about that, there's a lot of people that has not been happy, and I'm not, I mean, it takes a village, so I think, you know, nothing against him, but I think new blood is good, you know, so, and it may, like she said, you know, he may come to the surface, it sounds like he's very qualified to do that, but I do really urge you to give everybody an opportunity, because there's a lot of people that really don't even know what's going on. So to say nobody's come forth, you know, is that really a fair assessment? So you're, so on your own, you're just gonna make that decision, I mean, and feel good about it, I'm just saying, I would want, if, if let Mr. Cross stand on his own, I mean, look at everybody, and it may not be everybody, I mean, there may not be anybody else that applies, but I'm just saying, you can't say they're not a good candidate either.
Yeah, I'm not saying they're not, but we have a perfect candidate here, who's done a fantastic job, two decades of service to this township, in at least three different capacities, as I know of.
Yeah, and I'm not, I have nothing against Mr. Cross whatsoever, I mean, let me make that clear, I'm just saying, I think you have to kind of give everybody an opportunity, you know, that's, that's all I'm saying, I'm just saying that there's been issues in the past with township that I personally have had, it's still not cleared up. We gotta get some new people in, new ways of thinking, you know? So, I'm, I'm just voicing that opinion, you know, it's nothing against Mr. Cross, I'm just saying, don't discard new blood.
They don't have the opportunity, people, everyone has the opportunity to take a petition, every time, that's always available, I've done it more times.
And I, and I'm, again, it's nothing against him, I'm just saying you have an opportunity now, there's a lot of people that don't know about that, and people can, you know, for whatever reason, decide, hey, I want to be involved. So I don't think it's fair to say there's nobody else that might want it.
I didn't say there was nobody else that wanted it, I said there's no one else, she had two people that were with us, I would think they would have come tonight if that was the case.
Well, heck, there may be some people here that have interest, it's not me, it's not me, but I'm just simply saying, there may be people here fact gathering, you know, seeing what, you know, what's, what's going on, because I can guarantee you, there's a lot of people here in this town, township, that they don't, aren't aware of what's going on, so, just kind of keep.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that statement, and
What resolution number was that, 12?
Oh, come on up. No, let me mute, I'm sorry.
Lynn Cleveland Oxford Road. I was one of those persons who expressed interest, so I am here tonight, we are here tonight, who expressed interest, though, I agree with everything Dr. Cross said, and everything everybody else said, he served, he has served remarkably, done a lot of things, pulled things out that nobody else ever found, and he's just done some great things. But there are other people who have some interest, he is highly qualified, I will give him that, he has the time to do it, I will give him that. But there are the people who have interest, and I think we need to go through the process. I think we need to give it the 30 days, we need to let other people know about it, there's a lot of people don't even know about this, they do not know that Matt resigned yesterday, those of us who are personal friends, we knew it, we knew it a while back, but other people don't know that, they don't know that he resigned, they don't know there's an opening, and, though we could wait till the election, 18 months, to find out, you know, 16 months from now, find out how it goes, and then Dr. Cross could win, he very well could, he could take it now, but I think people need to give the opportunity, just like she said, there's a lot of things in this community that need opportunity to not just be pushed through. People are getting real tired of that being pushed through, there's a lot of being pushed through, that have gotten us in trouble over the years, I think y'all agree with that, there's a lot being pushed through that people don't agree with, and there's a lot of things got pushed through because people didn't get involved, I understand that, I got involved years ago because of that, so I think we need a lot of input in support for Dr. Cross. Let's give it a chance, and I, if it is true, I will wholeheartedly support him, but I was one who put the word in that, though I'm interested, I was not interested in, in the position, because it takes a lot of time, and I feel that I would be hampered by the position somewhat, because I can't talk to everybody the way I do without being in there, but if need be, I would put myself out to the community to do that, I'm willing to put that forth to the community, just like Dr. Cross was willing to put himself to the community. A lot of us are out here willing to do that, we just, they all need to be found, and everybody needs to get a chance, and putting a resolution through tonight, I think would be unfair to the community. What's, what's the problem in waiting 30 days? There's not big, there's no big push going through right now, you need something done in 30 days, so, that's my point. We're, we're well aware of that.
Dr. Cross, Dr. Cross received 653 votes in 2019, he is again, the only other candidate who expressed interest at that time, so I would like to introduce Resolution 2020-12, a resolution to appoint Dr. Mark Cross to the Germantownship trustee position indicated by Matt and Burnham on April 2020, effective June 1st, 2020. According to Section 503.24 of the Ohio Board of Elections Code, whereas Dr. Mark Cross has been a valued member of the Germantownship community for 30 years, Dr. Mark Cross was the only other candidate on the 2019 ballot, receiving 653 votes from this community. Dr. Mark Cross is a man of high character and ethics, and whereas Dr. Cross, Dr. Mark Cross, has dedicated his time to promoting and serving Germantownship in multiple capacities, spending over a decade on the Germantownship Board of Zoning Appeals, including in time, at time as president of the board, as well as a four-year term as Germantownship trustee, and whereas Dr. Mark Cross is always well-prepared, and spends his time researching each issue, Dr. Mark Cross was instrumental in finding a way for the Faust Trust to benefit the children of our community through many hours of his own dedicated research.
We need to
Hold on just a second, I believe, see my resolutions, the rest to be, I'm sorry. No, you're fine.
Is there a second on the resolution? We will not be able to discuss the resolution unless we have a second, we can still discuss the issue, but not the resolution. Here we go, the resolution dies.
Thank you, my name is Sandra Branham, I live on 9909 Sugar Street, and I would like this to be heard, that it needs to be opened up to the public, to the, to everyone in, in the district, in our township. I agree with Mrs. Daps, that's what I want is to be heard, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, wasn't sure if he was coming to speak. Yes, sir, come on up.
Steve Bader, Mayor of City of Germantown, 127 Lindell Drive. And I want to say, first of all, I'm not here to tell you how to do your business. We have a good partnership between the city and the township. That's my interest, how you decide your things, that's your, your doing. Let me go through something that we did in the last year. I'm sure you all know Mr. Lynn Kugel, outstanding council member. He was elected, but unfortunately passed away and was unable to take his position. One thing that concerned our council was that it was just not... It was a sensitive issue. We knew the community was sensitive to the fact that we had such a dedicated individual taken from us that now we have to replace him. And we did not hurry. In fact, we decided we were going to wait till the first of the year. Obviously, you knew all of what's going on, so, because we want to give the community a chance to, to recognize what has happened, what needed to take place, but yet we're still looking for a qualified individual at the same time. So we waited, we're glad we did, and it, it did two things. And I see, you know, again, I'm, I'm always speaking from my observations. There's two things that have to happen here. One, you have to get a, a member to fill your, to fill the term, but you have to also work together. Now, all of a sudden, there's a little bit of division here, there's a disagreement. I mean, here's a good, here's a good opportunity for you as a, as a township trustees to begin a sense of teamwork in, in here and how you conduct your business, whether it be picking a, a replacement, or maybe it's something else. But this teamwork, I know in our council, I have great council members. They go to bat for each other. We have open discussion, but it comes a time when you have to make a decision and go with it. But I see no reason, if there's one of the two that are wanting to wait, I see no reason to rush decision. I think you have to be of the same mind, Mr. Dr. Cross. Probably the excellent candidate. I haven't seen, I've known nothing about him that would cause me not to support him, but the two things that have to happen is you have to be together, on your township trustees, that you can say to yourself, we're ready to make this call, because you both are disagreeing right now. And so I would suggest working on that part of it and looking for community input in terms of how others feel about this. You may change your minds about it, because you'll hear enough from other people to say that, hey, I think that's a good idea. And so, those two things. One is, be sure you have the right candidate, and be sure you, you're building a team here that's going to take you to the future. Thank you.
Mr. Stubbs asked about the two people that contacted me. There was another individual that contacted me that was unable to come because of the short, they were unaware of the meeting this evening, they were unaware of the resignation of Mr. Burns, and they had already signed up to do a, because they take turns driving the team to practice and such, and so that individual had already signed up to do that. It was their night, and they couldn't really back out and leave the, the team, which I can appreciate and understand. So there, there is another individual that, in this two working days, I guess, I don't know when it was necessarily made public to people. I received the letter Friday morning, Mr. Houston brought it over. But as far as the average citizen, I don't know when it was made public to them, how long have they had to work through this and decide? I know it's a discussion you would probably have with your family, whether or not you want to run or not run, or it is a time commitment. So I think that we need to give those families time to, time to communicate, if they are interested or not interested, or what all's the job entail, even just making a phone call to Mr. Stubbs or myself and saying, what, what all is, what all is this job about? And, and learning about it. Dr. Cross does know, and the voters spoke in 2019.
They did, actually. They, Mr. Cross received 653 votes, as I stated earlier, almost double what you did.
I was a write-in candidate. My name was not on the ballot.
Correct, but the people spoke then, and it's, it's all the same thing. If the fiscal officer resigned, not, not that you're going to, Mr. Houston.
Mr. Stubbs, John Smith cannot hear you. He asked if he would unmute.
A vacancy in Colorado. They appointed, the, the runner-up was given right of first refusal, and then if that, he declined, they would pick someone else. The city charter, and this is in, I believe in Florida, the vacancy would first be offered to the first three runners-up, because they had three runners-up, and then they would choose from their protocol for offering the seat to the first runner-up in the last election. If that person accepted, the council would appoint him. That was in, oh, I'm not sure where that one was. But then Patterson City Council, they appointed the runner-up after, and these are all based on people passing, typically people passing away, also passing away, this is also within the first year of a term. It's, if we're a year and a half out, I would agree with you, that we could open this up to the public. We're, we're not six months in. He resigned less than six months into office. Six months ago, there was one person interested other than Matt Burns, and that was Dr. Cross. And that's why I feel he is the best person to fill this spot. He has proven himself time and time again, and he will continue to do so. So it's not just me saying it, this is, you can just Google runner-up, appointed to vacant seat, and you'll find instances all across the country where this is normal practice.
So the resolution's been made. It has, it did not have a second. So at this point, in order to move forward, we need to decide what are our next steps. So...
Next step is to appoint Dr. Cross to hold his position.
I don't feel like that is the right thing to do. I feel like we need to open it up to our citizens and allow our citizens to have a voice. That's what our job is, is to allow our citizens to have an opportunity to be part of this government body.
But, so if the fiscal officer resigned, would you support the second vote?
No, I would want people to apply. That's my belief. You can, I, I apologize that... So our next step is, we have 30 days. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. No, no, that's fine. That's fine. Well, as long as they can hear you, I, I don't mind.
... If we proceed this, you appoint some other person. We want to have a, what I would consider a minority vote. We'll have two candidates up there who had less than 300 votes total, that believe him, that are on this council. And we got a guy over here that would be 600. And I don't, I just don't, I just don't think that's, that's what that would be.
Sir, in all fairness and honesty, I was a write-in candidate. People had to physically write my whole name into the ballot, and for me to get 324 votes is worth, I think I got, it's huge, right? That's the problem.
That's the way I feel. We've got a candidate, they're really good. You've got to...
It's the only, it's the only term, it doesn't go... It comes up at the same time, I will...
Correct.
This year.
Next year. 2021, I believe, is what Nathaniel said. I don't have that in front of me. Is that what you recall?
The, the candidate that is appointed will stay in office through '20 and '21, but will have to run in November of '21, and then have two additional years, sort of, within the election. Because it, it is a four-year term. We have to vote in November 2021 for a two-year term.
Yes. So essentially, all three of us would be up on the ballot at the same time.
Generally, it's all years.
Yes. Yeah, it's a little, it'll be a very interesting time. Yes, ma'am.
So how does this work? If you guys can't, oh, Deb Cross, I'm sorry.
Can you come up there so that...
You're Deb Cross.
I'm so sorry.
Deb Cross, 744 South Divers. So if you guys can't agree, no matter who applies, quote-unquote applies, if you guys can't agree, then it goes to what, this 30 of five, gang of five? And those people were, were written on a list by Matt Burns, right? And Matt Burns didn't really work out very well for the township votes, did he? I mean, he took $4,500 in, in, in money from the township and did nothing, did absolutely nothing for this township. My husband, Dr. Mark Cross, did more for the township after he was no longer in office than he did while he was in office. So this is going to be five people that are going to choose who the next township trustee is going to be because of him?
Eventually, if we do not decide, it's already made. We need to decide. If they do not decide, it would go to the probate judge.
Now, is the probate judge, does that have anything to do with your father? Is that...
Probate judge. He's a municipal court judge.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. So that's just my, my thought on that.
So are you, are you comfortable letting the voters have a say?
Letting the voters be able to, the citizens say what interests his position.
So the five people specifically, whoever he listed on his petition, you're comfortable with those five people picking the person that will be here for the next two years, year and a half?
So, like I was saying, I personally, the way I believe that it should go, and when I've talked to the Board of Elections and Nathaniel, their kind of suggestions, it's not written in this ORC, they just said some guidance as to what they believed was, and what has happened, I guess, in other areas that they've dealt with, was that we decide, which is why I put this on the agenda actually, where to post, the posting at, the length of time to leave it up, they suggested a seven to 10-day timeframe to let citizens, give citizens time to apply. The wording of the post was also on here, because obviously, we need to make sure that they are citizens of the township. And then, after we have, we allow seven to 10 days to run its course, allow the citizens to throw their name in the hat, if you will, and then we come back, we have another meeting, and we discuss the applicants that we have, and then we go from there. And Dr. Cross may be the best applicant that we have, but I just think we need to let it run its course. Why are we not giving the citizens the seven to 10 days of an open time to...
I know your vacation starts, I mean, at one point, are you gonna, how much of the month that you're gonna miss that's gonna make it, that we can't do anything? Are you ever gone for a week, two weeks, the rest of the month? I have no idea. I know you're gone next Monday for our meeting.
I, I am. I will return in plenty of time to get this taken care of.
But that's not an, that's not an answer.
So you want me to put out exactly what dates I'm going to be gone out of town when I have a home? I just don't know if that's the smartest thing to do, that I'm going to literally broadcast it on the internet. You're going to put a sign along the window that says, "Break in." I'm not...
We're having our next meeting online.
Okay.
Which I was, we're in person tonight, but I, I allowed that to happen because we're going to be out of town.
We can, we're not discussing, I mean, that is not on our agenda, but I should be in town in plenty of time to discuss this and have it taken care of. I mean, I could die tomorrow. I theoretically should be back in town in plenty of time, Mr. Stubbs, to get this taken care of. I mean, the resolution has been made, the resolution has, has died. We need to move forward with the next steps of making this happen. We can sit here and argue all night long, it's just not getting us anywhere. We need to take the steps. So to me, the next steps are, how do you want to post it? What's the wording of the post? How long would you like to leave the post up? And when would you like to meet it next?
I don't think it needs to be posted.
So the citizens don't need to know about it?
No, they need to know about it, and the email went out today.
To who?
Lori's email list. I know you shared it on Facebook, so I know several people have seen it, it went on the township email, township Facebook. People in here knew to come tonight, so several people have known. Again, if we didn't have someone like Dr. Cross, if he ran on the post, if Matt ran on the post, totally different situation. This happened a year in, year and a half in, or more, totally different situation. We're less than six months. Matt resigned less than six months in. It should go back to the person who was, who was also on the ballot, who took the time to fill out his petition, to go to the Board of Elections multiple times, because that all takes effort. And he put that effort in, and he deserves to be here.
Is there anything else that we need? I mean, if we're not, if you're not willing to discuss posting out to the public, is there anything else that we need to discuss? I mean, because that's really the only thing we can discuss, is what is on this agenda, the only point of the meeting.
Well, we need to schedule a meeting for 48 hours from now to discuss this again, if there's not going to be a resolution tonight.
Why 48 hours?
Because you have to have 48 hours notice to post a special meeting.
I mean, we need to get the people more than 48 hours timeframe. I'm not...
Why do we not have somebody in place? When we have somebody to put in place for our June meeting, which is in a week.
Thank you.
Not to pass, it's huge. It's worse.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, come on up.
I have no problem opening this up. The problem I have is, you could appoint somebody that has no effort, no, no skin in the game. They just came, they, they decided, I want to run, elect me, you know, or, or appoint me. They haven't, haven't done anything, they haven't come to a meeting. Has, has any of your two interested people come to a trustee meeting? How many meetings did they come to?
A lot of them. Mr. Cleveland attended.
I, I know Lynn, yes. I agree that, yeah. Well, it's, so you, you get, again, someone who is going to spend 18 months in office without having to put any effort into doing so. They didn't have to get their petitions, they didn't have to put out signs, they didn't have to run a campaign. I, I'm not sure that's a fair way to do it. I agree, you can open it up. I don't care. It doesn't make any difference to me. I don't, this should not be a political sort of decision, because you want to get someone who aligns with your beliefs, vice versa. Every trustee is equal in their, in their job as trustee. That is the most important thing.
And I'd like to point out that Dr. Cross and I have disagreed multiple times since he's been here, and you're, there's, there's no issue, because you're a man of character. We can have a disagreement, we can go forward.
We can compromise, yeah.
And we can go forward. So I disagree with Mark multiple times since he's been here, and...
I just, I just don't want to, I, I want to say this diplomatically, I don't want this decision to be made because you are looking for a certain person. And that kind of goes back to the gang of five. If I, no, if, if you guys don't decide, then five people from Matt's petition will decide. I'm not sure that Matt had the dedication to this trustee position. He left after five months, he never even attended the meeting before he put his petitions in, or put his petitions in for elections. He showed up for one meeting from the time, I think, he put the petitions in until the election. So you, you know, I, I want you to be very careful. If you're going to put this out, pick someone who's going to be dedicated to the position, not someone who is going to align with one person or another. I can get along with anybody, you know, so, but I will, you know, either of you, if I'm back on the trustee, I will call you out if there's something I don't think is correct, which you know. So, so, so again, I, I think it's fine, open it up, but be very careful to get someone who's going to want to do the job, have time to do the job, and is dedicated to do the job versus getting a paycheck.
Your pool of people who would, who, we could even, I feel like we can even look at the positions, look at meetings that showed interest, or served on the Board. That we have, that have dedicated their time, and that narrows it down pretty small. Mr. Cleveland comes by meetings, which has gotten us in here, however, that would provide a bit of a conflict of interest that I would have a problem, to be particularly honest with. interest that I would have a problem, to be particularly honest with, um, and otherwise, I've talked before about, about being a trustee at some point, and I, I'm saying, I, I like you, and I think you do a great job, but I have a bit of an issue there, um, so, I think it needs to be somebody who lives in the township, I think that's important, lives in the unincorporated area of the township, um, it needs to be, um, someone who will put the time in, uh, Lee was pointing out earlier, you and I both work, um, during the day, many times, Dr. Cross. Dr. Cross.
No, you're fine.
Dr. Cross was able to, uh, come to meetings during the day for police and zoning and other issues that you and I couldn't attend to, um, so, again, there's so many, there's so many, and I, and I'm looking at that, because probably some of us are disqualified. When we have somebody here today, somebody that's put in the dedication, it's run for the position, one, run for the position again, um, I, I find it, um, it would be a bit tough to not support Dr. Cross in this position, um, after all he's done for the township, I mean, just with the impact that's gonna have on the community over the next fifteen or so years, that's all because he took the time, um, that you and I didn't take, that I don't have, and I'm sure you probably don't have, he took the time to go to Dayton Public Library in Dayton on his own, on the microphone, and found where this address was, and that shows true dedication, that he was willing to do that, because that's tough, and he didn't, so, again, my support, as well as apparently the entire side of this with Dr. Cross.
All right, that's all, and again, um, if, if someone is truly interested in the position, they can run. Again, it's gonna be a year and a half, they can run, and that will show, they can start, that's all, that's all I have to say.
All right, so, um, Mr. Stubbs, I just want to make sure that I'm, I guess, not missing anything, um. Are you wanting to pass the position?
I don't think it needs to be posted, but if you would like to post it in the Germantown Press for one week, I'd say that's fine, I don't know, it would be a cost, of course.
Yes, sure.
Haley Sewell, eight one two two, Lower Miami Spurgro, um, Germantown Press, they normally want me to have my stuff in by the Monday before the Thursday that they print it, however, I made it this Thursday, if you guys want me to, or you guys, however, or Mark do it, however you guys wanted to do that, um, then it would run this Thursday, you'll be gone next week, next Monday, and then, if that would, I'm. Maybe net, run it next week, I mean, whatever you guys wanted to do.
I mean, even if we put it in.
And then come back into Mondays from now.
Even if we put it in the press and then, um, put it on the different, just gave people some time, I know I shared it today from, I believe, the Germantown Township Police Department had it on there, but I think that they just posted it today, if I'm correct, that's the first time I saw it this morning, I believe the Germantown Township Police Department.
Yes. Because we got it out after the.
Yeah, so it was on Monday. Today, so I think that it, it's getting out, um, we just need to give it its time, its due process, um, so if we even want to, we'll leave that and have it, say, the window of time closed, and then we give it a few days and you and I meet and, or obviously have a meeting and, um, open it up to, very much similar to this, that we could even go into executive session to discuss, I don't know.
I mean, it's allowable by the Ohio Advice Code, but it does seem fitting, there's no reason to, there's nothing, there's no identities to conceal, there's no purpose of doing that, so I would be opposed to an executive session for any of the discussion about the appointment of this position.
Yes, sir, let me mute real quick.
David Grun, fourteen two thirty-nine, keeper. I've got a question, you're not obligated to answer. Has anybody, any of you, made personal contacts to solicit someone for this office?
I, no.
And I do have a comment with regard to not knowing about what's going on. None of us knew about what was going on when I started coming to these meetings, because we had a big fight about a water district nobody knew about, and it was in.
Every month.
There was no secrets, all you had, all you had to do was either read the minutes, or sit your butt in one of these chairs. That's what I suggest you do. If you're interested in what's going on in this township, get out here on meeting night and sit down, then you know.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, let me.
RT Stand, three sixty-four East Market, and I'm speaking as a resident of the township, not as fiscal officer. Uh, in two thousand thirteen, I was appointed to Germantown City Council, and the process, and Mayor Vader will remember this, the process that went through at that time is, just as you're actually suggesting, Mrs. Reed, uh, that various, there was a notice put out that the city was looking for people who were interested in filling, there were actually two seats open on council at that time. I threw my hat in the ring, and then each of us, one at a time, got interviewed by council in an executive session. So it is a process that you could also follow here, since you have at least two known candidates and a third one whose name I don't think has been released yet, uh, but you may wish to interview those three people and anyone else who steps forward should you decide to advertise. Thanks.
So, I, I actually am not opposed to interviewing them at all, I don't think that there's any harm in doing so, if they're throwing their hand in the ring and interested, I think it would be beneficial to both Mr. Stubbs and I to. That, for Mr. Stubbs and I to both ask them questions and get to know maybe why are they choosing to do this, ask them, um, some questions, and, and I agree, Mr. Stubbs, it could be a public interview, I just think a more private setting sometimes allows people to be more open and honest.
If you're gonna hide stuff, you probably won't choose the first ones. If you're gonna be more open and honest and private than you would be in public, you're probably not gonna make a very good public servant.
I just think executive sessions are there for a reason, um, and it's by no means to hide any. It's by no means to hide anything, but I think that there are, that, that's why that they are outlined in the ORC, very specific things, um, and reasons to have, um, executive sessions, and. Like, like, for example, Mr. Stubbs, I would love to know if other people have reached out to you. You have not gotten anyone else to reach out to you?
I'm assuming the same person reached out to you as well, but, uh, she called this afternoon, um, and I said she's coming to meeting tonight, but then our cows got out, and, uh, my date hadn't had a meal, so, uh, this is how it goes, if you live in the township, I guess, but, um, but she wasn't official, or throwing her name, I mean, she wasn't throwing her name in, she's, had mentioned the possibility, and that she was going to talk to you, so.
I did have a lady, a woman, female, call me today with some interest, so, um, I did not ask if I could publicly say her name, so I don't feel like I should just let it out there, um, that's why I have not said her name, and, and honestly, I'm afraid if I say, well, Sally's interested in this position, then somebody else will go, well, I probably shouldn't do that because Sally's already interested in it, and so, um, until I get the okay from her to say her name, I just don't, I don't feel right about doing that, so, um, as far as posting it or opening up the posting, do you have, um, I personally think seven to ten days would give people, um, that was what the Board of Elections suggested, give people at least a solid week with maybe a weekend in there to think about it, discuss it, look at it, look into it, and then we could re-adjourn, reconvene for, um, a meeting to go over the applicants that, that we have. Well, I mean, I think this is something that you and I have to, I mean, I can't just make this decision on my own, we have to, um, come to an agreement about the length of time, where to post it, I know you mentioned the Germantown Press, um, yes, sir, I apologize.
Kurt Jacoby, one two nine five five, Harris Road. In, in times like this, where there have been, been cases where there's been a, a simple flip of the coin is often decided.
So you had mentioned the, uh, Germantown Press is posting it, I know he said that Germantown posted on their Facebook and on their website, I believe he said, was that correct?
I'm sure they would be willing to do that again. The City of Germantown posts their notices at the post office, I believe, Mayor Vader, and I believe also. At the library. And of course, there's some.
The library open now?
That's a good point, I'm not, I think they're only available for pickup, you know, if you drive through and pick up, but. I don't know, depends if you send your kid, let us know, we'll sign, it's open to the post office, that's a, um, okay.
And they also advertise many of those same items in the Germantown Press once.
Okay.
Let me, uh, let me see, you want to, it's still your duty, uh, TV channel five?
Is that through NBC?
I think they did that also for this, I asked Kelly, I asked on duty to do that on Friday.
Let's find a route through town on the cable channel, reference definitely has to be given to your township, non-incorporated township residents. The city of the incorporated has their representatives on city council, it's nice to have, uh, at least the opportunity to have three people elected in the unincorporated area to represent the best interests of the German township, um, community.
So the press would also reach township people, um, the Germantown Township Facebook page, I believe the police has it, um, on there, so that would, and, um, I know he said Germantown, but I know you just said the unincorporated, but at least that would reach, and there are people that live in the township that still see the city's Facebook page, I'm, I'm gonna mute it, sorry.
I just heard the cable, I don't, does the township have access to the cable channels?
What about posting it by the drop locks where the township's, does it drop off their?
That's a good idea, that's a good idea, okay, I'll put that, so. So I'll just put in your trash, I'll know what that means, when I write it down. Um, are there any other good locations that anyone can?
It started on Saturday, I think.
Yeah, you started, I mean, the, the case, the township's first, he's came to the council, but hopefully, I don't come.
I believe they have a board now, is that correct?
I think, I think, uh, there could be hundreds of kids down there to give a night, uh, but, you know, I don't know who exactly, but we may put multiple postings down there based on the age of the child, and what field they're on, and so forth.
Yes, because that would have city and township people on there as well. That's a good idea, that's one I would not have thought of, considered.
So the wording doesn't need to be too in-depth.
I wouldn't.
Vacancy at the Germantown Ship Board of Trustees, I mean, it needs to be about two sentences long, it doesn't need to be a contact here for further information.
Just so I understand, so if there's five people round that position, do they ultimately make a decision, or do they make a recommendation?
Only if we can't agree.
We don't agree within thirty days.
So if you don't agree, then they, the five, yeah.
They only have ten days after the thirty rule. I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Thirty days for us, and then if we cannot, ten days for that group of.
His petition wasn't filled out with the names on all papers, so I'm not sure it's valid in any way, but, that's something, for the committee of five, he did not put that on every, um, petition, which I think you're required to, so, that'll be a.
Should, do you guys have an application?
That hasn't really happened.
Well, I mean, not for this particular thing, we had an application, I believe, for the zoning position and for other ones, but I mean, specifically for this.
Would that be something that we?
I would say that you would, oh, sorry, just, I would assume that you would want a name and contact information, uh, I would put in there.
Address.
Email address and phone number, that way you have three different ways.
Some way to contact, yes.
And I'm happy to be the recipient of those names and addresses, if you want them to go there to me, and then I can discontinue them to both of you, or if you want, that's fine, both of you, uh, you decide.
I mean, yes, when you receive them, just send them, just, oh, I assume they'll be through email, he said.
Just send them to the fiscal office.
Yeah, and then you can just send them out as you receive them.
I would be happy to do that.
I assume most people will send them through email, right?
I don't think we would need Dr. Cross's at this point, or Mr. Cleveland's, since they both publicly stated, they would just suggest they both send them, you know, ready part of the.
They should send in a letter why they want to do it.
Apples to apples, that's a good idea, so I guess that's part of it, we need to decide what, do we want a full resume from people? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. Yes, that's what we were, yeah, so a re, a resume with a cover letter or some, I guess we can discuss that with them, but for sure, resume with name, address, all of that stuff to make sure they're a citizen, right, you want to make sure they, they live here.
The resume should have everything.
Yes, okay.
You have to be a qualified elector.
Yes. The thing that you had sent out to the city and, and put on, or had Lori put on the Facebook page today, I'm not sure, I don't have it pulled up right in front of me, if we couldn't use some of that wording that you already have there and just kind of.
We can, I think, whatever we put into the Germantown Press, I mean, to say best use.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
What, what got put on all of the media notices for tonight's meeting, was mainly that when we were having the meeting, here's the purpose of the meeting, and the majority of it was how to access by web access.
Okay, so some resume, um. Where to post openings, we got that, the length of time, um, seven to ten days, you think that's acceptable, Mr. Stubbs? Yes, that's what, yeah, I was just trying to get a, um, if we did it, just looking at my calendar a little bit.
Today's first.
Is, so, it wouldn't be posted today, so would we post it tomorrow, I would assume, is when we would start that?
The question will be whether or not Haley can get a new discharge this Thursday.
Okay.
If it takes another week, then everything backs up.
Yeah, we can't write this out too long, we can't, the state puts a deadline, unless five unelected people make this decision, if that's even a possibility.
I would say more people probably read.
Emails, and they.
I would agree too.
Emails from Germantown, Germantown Sheriff, Germantown Sheriff Police, Germantown Police, Germantown Fire, all those, that were all involved with, and read the printed.
Isn't there like two thousand followers of the Germantown Sheriff's page?
The police one, is that what you're saying? Um, I'm not, I don't have it right in front of me. I like the press.
Pretty, not too far off. I think the, the, and the postings, probably get more people.
I, I would agree with that, so.
And we get more, more, more people know about.
Yes, and it, there isn't, in the ORC, it does not say it has to be in, in a newspaper, or, you know, some postings, yes, um, so, even if it does. So even if it does not get in the press, is that, Mr. Stubbs, do you feel like if it doesn't get in the press, if we post it, yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure we were. So if we would start that. Tomorrow, tomorrow, so it would be the second. If we do 10 days from then, it would be the 12th, that's a Friday. The 12th, I feel like we would have to get until the end of the 12th, correct? I mean.
The 13th, I will see what's coming in.
The 13th, yes.
Email addresses, this office or email addresses.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then we should go ahead and schedule it on a special meeting for the 15th.
Will you send me whatever you wanted to say?
I will work on that. I can.
Right.
Yes, yes, I'll write it out and before I leave here and you feel free to look it over and make sure it's acceptable before we.
Probably need to write it. Otherwise, you're basically making decisions outside of.
All right.
Even something as simple as writing a letter.
All right, so.
If someone had one they brought in tonight, we could edit it in the meeting, it'd have to be originally written. Without, if you write it, they can't really edit, go back and forth without being in a meeting.
We weren't voting on, that's okay. Have what you sent out, just so, throw me the, use as a guide, no question, if you don't mind.
This is what's posted on the door outside.
And I've read it three or four times, but I. All right.
One of the things you will want to consider is whether or not, if we have our special meeting on the 15th, whether you will require all candidates to be in attendance. That is something you'll have to decide.
And it should be. It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Yeah, it's two weeks from today. And that gets, that's half our 30 days, so.
I'm not here on the 15th, I will be here on the 17th.
Whatever day you choose.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't have a choice really, I was kind of a.
So that's beyond half of our, half of our time to give this result.
Should have pulled up one of somebody that posted it, I should have pulled up Germantown's to see what you guys. Yes. Okay. Just gonna throw that right at your dad, are you?
It is, it's exactly where it's for. But you're not the notice.
No, 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 what Germantown put up there, I was just trying to think, I know Miami Township replaced one, or should not say replaced one. They filled the vacancy not too long ago, if I would have pulled up theirs. Yes, so how did Perry fill theirs, did they?
Looks like they.
Sorry, what, did they? Okay. Oh, this is, I just wanted to know how Germantown, when they, when people passed away, what did it, what did their, so notice that they get township trustee seat. This needs some work.
Mr. John Smith online says Germantown shit encompasses Germantown as well, preference to one or the other is wrong.
So, Mr. Stubbs, right now I just have notice of a vacant township trustee seat. If you're interested in filling the position, I need to put in there, what is it you have to be, you need to be in a. Qualified elector. Filling the position.
It'd be 30 days also, we can't just move in the township last weekend.
That's true.
Yes, but I would fall under a qualified elector, I would think, would that be.
There's no requirement to resume.
Filling the position.
Incorporated or unincorporated.
Must be a. Not sure if we're going to be able to read this chicken scratcher, I'm writing down right now.
Are you planning to have each candidate a presentation, a making presentation? Yeah, maybe just like I do.
Well, I'm just saying, it's versus you take them back to the trustee room and interrogate them or interview them. And then they come out here and we have no idea what went on there.
It needs to be public.
It's a really open process.
I'll tell you, I'm not going into executive session at all for any of this, so I'll tell you right now, it will be in the public.
This is all about the Germantown shit residents, you know, choosing this person. And what they have to offer.
Can we ask them questions?
That's what that resolution says, Phil.
This needs to be a little more lengthy. It says notice of vacant township trustee seat. If you're interested in filling the position, you must be a qualified elector.
At least not taken township by.
I feel like it needs to say like something.
It doesn't need to be the role or whatever.
No positions there, people want to apply.
I know who the other candidate is.
If they don't know, if they don't know what the position is, then rather don't.
So you have two people that are qualified for this position, that come to our meeting, they're both here today, they both know what's going on. So I feel like that's how, I mean, you gotta know what's going on, you gotta put in the effort to know what's going on.
By, did we say the 12th, was that the date?
12th, was that Friday?
Okay.
Yes.
End of business day. On the 12th of October. My end of business.
If you just put by June 12th, wouldn't that be by midnight of June 12th, that way they have a full day, just by June 12th, that way it would give them the day. Okay. This page is a wee bit scribbled on. All right, notice that, am I, I mean, a notice of a vacant township trustee seat. If you're interested in filling the position, you must be a qualified elector. Please contact Germantown shit fiscal officer at, at your email address, they're there by June 12th, 2020.
Did I hear the 17th?
Yes.
I think that should work. To discuss and meet candidates.
Yes, seven o'clock, must come to seven o'clock on the 17th to make a presentation as to why they should be chosen.
Discuss and meet candidates. Okay, this needs to be, special meeting. 6:17 to discuss and meet candidates, please submit your resume. This has got to be reworded, but it's getting there. You must be a qualified elector, please contact, please send.
Something about the 17th, you will be required to present a presentation. Concerning your interest in the position or something like that, so they know when they come in versus they're showing up and they say, you say, why you want to be a trustee and you're not. That way, they know they have to be there, they have to, they're required to make presentations for trustees.
Search your resume to the trustees also.
Yeah.
Yes, like I say, please send resume. Please send resume to Germantown shit fiscal officer, because probably, yes, by the 12th, that's what I was gonna say, please send resume to Germantown, to the Germantown shit fiscal officer by Friday, June 12th, 2020.
And all candidates will be asked to make a presentation. Special meeting to be held on June 17th at 7:00 PM. Please plan accordingly or something.
Okay, this will be us, my resolution. I mean, do these people need to bring like a PowerPoint, or are we just talking like they're just gonna stand up there with their resume and go over? Qualifications? Okay, I just want to make sure, because when you say presentation, some people, they're gonna come here with like.
I was thinking. Something that just people are sending stuff. Send out to the recipient or the respondent says that on the 17th, you will be making a presentation to the trustees, member of the public will be there. Do you want to let, as Johnson suggested, you know, what citizens ask, I mean, you know, I will think that they should be asking. 25 citizens asking every candidate or every person.
That could get very lengthy.
Three citizen questions per person, just so citizens can have some sort of input. I ask questions, so maybe between now and next week's meeting, kind of both that you think about how you like to process or have an agreement, when stuff's coming in this. Send out to the respondent, have a process. May also necessitate if we get four people to send something in, we know we can do a meeting at seven. If we get 23 people, we may have.
Yes, that may get a little lengthy. Okay, so I'm going to put this. Into a. Better.
Probably sign it.
Okay.
The final draft, sign it. I'll send that, just because when I send it, I have to basically have it signed and I have a paper trail. Whereas you guys are not requesting it, I'm requesting it, so there's a signed copy, which I was requesting, that's all we have.
Send it to an email.
Or that, yeah.
I'm just rewriting this so that it looks prettier.
If you, if you take, if you and Jacob agreed to the wording.
I mean, I think we're pretty close to it.
Send an email to Haley and the three of us. Next March, you can take it forward and go to the press.
Yep.
So far, I mean, just as long, this is all I've got, chicken scratch, where I just need to need it a little bit. So, okay, yeah, I think it's, I will get it, I'm gonna try to finish it up before I leave and I have all ready to go. So we have that, and so the 17th would be our next. And like, I'm not sure, it might have been Mr. Keener who said it, if we have a lot of people that would like to present. We may have to have a backup day too. If we have 10 people that want, and we involve questions and stuff, it could get kind of, kind of lengthy as well. And then if we have.
Always on the 17th, continue meeting.
For the next.
It's still, the special meeting did not need to be posted, I don't believe, we just continue the meeting at a later point.
Okay, well, I should know too, if you ever have, you know, this summer, people that are interested are out of town on the 17th, and then we've limited to, you have to be here this one day, that could. I'm just trying to think through the difficulties or the hurdles we may have to get through if there are any. Well, I think we're springing a date on them, you know, you have to be here.
And we're not dragging this out to the 30th, that's the goal that we're trying to accomplish, but it needs to be taken care of. I'd say most people know about it now.
All right, is there anything else that we need to discuss regarding this open?
I just say, I appreciate what you guys said, but again, if Dr. Cross hadn't had the background and history, if it was anybody else, I wouldn't be pushing. Because I would like to see a full board at our, our meeting on next Monday, is the purpose for my making the resolution tonight. So I understand your concerns and I appreciate it, but I was looking to have a full board at our next meeting and continue to go forward, so. I think, just thank you all for coming, I definitely appreciate all the comments tonight and we'll see where we go going forward.
Guys, before you turn me after, read the notice. Maybe that would be appropriate, thank you.
Okay.
Always good to have an experienced fiscal officer.
All right, I'm going to try to read through this, it might take me, that's why I'm rewriting it so that it kind of flows better, because I've started, restarted.
Read it slowly, because I'm not going to write it down.
I'll have, yeah, 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 it'll be in writing. So it says, notice of a vacant Germantown shit trustee seat. If you're interested in filling the position, you must be a qualified elector. Please, sorry, it jumps around again, please send a resume, please send your resume to the Germantown shit fiscal officer at his email address by Friday, June 12th, 2020. All candidates will be asked to make a presentation on June 17th, 2020, please plan accordingly. Well, yes, at 7:00 PM, I had not like.
Call this special meeting.
Okay, so there will be, let me. Give me a second, let me write this so it flows better, because it's all kind of jumbled. The position, you. Must be a. Qualified elector. Please send. Sorry, I cannot write as fast as I talk, please send your resume. To the. Fiscal officer. Friday. Please plan to attend the special meeting, that's how I should probably start that. Special meeting on 17th, 2020. I will read it again, I apologize, I'm just trying to put this all kind of in order. I will read it again, I apologize, I'm just trying to put this all kind of in order. Mr. Stubbs, real quick, do you, would, do you want to put in here, I have, please plan to attend the special meeting on 6/17, 2020 at 7:00. All candidates will be asked to make a presentation. Okay, thank you, I do not have it in there.
A presentation not exceeding.
I would say public.
A public presentation.
Hey, oh man, you guys are making me rewrite this again, okay, we asked to make a public presentation. Not to exceed five minutes.
You say, you say we're required to make a presentation?
Well, they don't.
They will be asked to, so I mean, if.
They'll disqualify themselves, in my opinion, if they're only once.
Should have been clear though.
Yeah, make it clear, they were required, maybe that's, we feel that a little bit because we don't.
Oh, I mean, I feel like if, it says they're going to be asked to make a presentation, a public presentation, if they don't, if they do not make a public presentation, then I would assume that. That's right, you know, we, we drop it down a little bit on an average sliding scale, that's right, we'll have a rubric, I'm just kidding. So I, please plan to attend the special meeting on 6/17, 2020 at 7:00. All candidates will be asked to make a public presentation not to exceed five minutes. Would you like to put in there, that's where I was at before and I messed up, and take, I think, Mr. Keener, throw out three questions from audience. We obviously don't want a ton of them.
But you can, you can decide that, how many questions, if you.
Okay, so we'll just put not to exceed five minutes, and then the night of the meeting, we will discuss.
Questions from the board. And a public.
Okay, yeah. So right now, and I, obviously this is a working document, so notice of a vacant Germantownship trustee seat. If you're interested in filling the position, you must be a qualified elector. Please send your resume to the Germantownship Fiscal Officer by Friday, June 12th, 2020 at, and I will add your email address. Please plan to attend the special meeting on 6/17, 2020 at 7:00. All candidates will be asked to make a public presentation not to exceed five minutes. I'm sorry, can you?
Send it back to you.
Oh, I put seven, they, they think I'm going to be here at 7:00 AM? I'll add in PM.
Is that a motion?
Oh, I apologize, yes, do I need to reread that again?
No, just.
I make a motion to.
Any discussion of the motion, all in favor?
Hi.
Keep that for future reference. I talked to the Board of Elections today, it said in 18 years, they've never had a township trustee that they've had to go through this process and quit. This person had worked their 18 years. So this is pretty rare, we are charged, piling new ground here.
All right, is there anything else, I'm sorry, I'm still reading over this for, I'll call it typos for errors. Is there anything else that we need to discuss?
With this, I don't believe so.
All right.
But I, I will say again publicly that this does not need to go 30 days. This should not go to the five-member committee if that is even valid. This decision should be made by us prior to the 30 days exceeding. It's in the Ohio revise code.
It is, it's in the second paragraph, it says, if a township is without a border or whatever, as no appointment is made within 30 days after the occurrence of a vacancy. A majority of the persons designated as the committee of five on the last filed nominating position of the township officer, whose vacancy is to be filled, who are residents of the township shall appoint a person having the qualifications of an elector to fill the vacancy.
And it's the ORC 5003.24.
And you have the option, it's always on your petition when you fill out, to be on the ballot, there's a spot you choose, you can put five names there. Some people do, some people don't.
Different ways you choose, if you die before the election, then those five people can choose who your replacement is on the ballot.
And some places require it, I think Oakwood and then the city of Dayton, there, it's required, and then maybe county commissioner. It's on.
It, it's often things I think people overlook too, because you don't fill it out, I mean.
Abner called me today and told me where to look for it, and I went to my petition, it's like.
People just overlook it, it's right there, when you fill out your name, so if you're looking at your petition to run, you put your name and the position you're running for and your party, and it's actually right below that, and it's a, not a very big box. And you just, you know, fill out those, those five.
That's why I think that Max may be involved.
Four or five. If we make, if you make a decision within 30 days, it doesn't matter.
It shouldn't, it should be made, this decision should be made within 30 days, absolutely. It absolutely should not go to the committee of five, and it absolutely should not go to a probate judge.
All right, is there anything else? If not, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi.